Village of Green Hills Council Meeting to order for August 27, 2024. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Ms. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Ms. Walter.
Here.
Ms. Charlies.
Here.
Mr. Holter.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. We have a prayer by Maria Walter.
Lord, we ask you to send your speed of servant who upon all of us here gather this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Lord, teach us to be generous in listening to others' points of view and to understand it. We also, Lord, ask you to bless us all that everything that we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. And please allow all our men and women in uniform to get home safe to their loved ones every night or every morning according to their shifts. We praise this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have minutes for previous council meeting of July 30, 2024. There are no corrections. The minutes will stand as approved.
No corrections.
We have public presentations. Jennifer Weichert, Library.
Welcome. Thank you so much for letting me come back again. I'm famous now, apparently. So, thank you very much.
Don't let it go to your head.
I will try not to.
Did they let you have the day off?
No, but they did celebrate it on Facebook. It's hard, you know, three hours notice before it was my day. However, it was appreciated. The proclamation is now hanging at night, so thank you very much. But the library continues to have lots of wonderful and exciting things. Summer is now over, and I don't know how it can possibly be, but we had a very successful summer reading program. And now we're kicking off into the school year, so we're helping to support our teachers and students and anybody else who wants to come and see us. There are some important things coming up. The library does provide voter registration services and also vote by mail request forms. So if you visit any library location, you can register to vote, fill out the form and give it to us, and we will make sure it gets to the Board of Elections. We can also provide any of the forms. We have computers if you need to check the status of any registration or see what your polling place is or anything like that. The library can help with all of that. We have an entire page referenced on here. You can't see the QR code, but if you go to our website and type in voter services, it will pop up. And there's a wide range of information that would be available for people. Of course, October 7 is the deadline to register for the November election, and then October 8 is when early in-person voting begins. October 29 is the deadline for absentee vote by mail applications, and then Tuesday, November 5 is of course Election Day. So if there's anything we can help with, you know, making sure that you have everything registered for you to go come and see us at any moment. We also are going to have a really big program, the Stern Lecture, which is the Mary S. Stern Lecture, will be on Wednesday, September 25 at the Aaronoff Center at 7:00 PM, and tickets are $5 through $15. David Grand will discuss Killers of the Flower Moon, The Osage Murders, and the Birth of the FBI. And it was on the New York Times Nonfiction Bestseller List for over 100 weeks, and it was a finalist for the National Book Award and ranked number one on a number of different lists and everything. So the author, David Grand, will be there to discuss his book and all of the research that he did and everything. So it should be a very thought-provoking and a very interesting evening, and we certainly hope that people will be able to come downtown to the Aaronoff to see it. There are still tickets available, so it is not sold out yet. So if you go online to our webpage, you can get a link straight to it, or you can go to the Aaronoff and find it through their ticket as well. Forest Park's grand opening. The new Forest Park branch will be opening on Saturday, September 14, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. They will have a lot of ribbon cutting and activities, and you'll be able to see what's inside that 26,000 square foot building that's been being built next to the post office for a couple of years now. The address is 660 Northland Boulevard, and there'll be a few days when the old location of Forest Park won't be available, and they're kind of in the midst of transferring over. But it will be a lot of fun. And in case you wondered, this does not affect us at all, other than you will have a large branch that will have a lot of resources, a much closer drive than our downtown branch or some of our other ones. So we still have our hours Monday through Wednesday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We added those Wednesday hours. And then Thursday through Saturday, it's 10 to 6. We're not open on Sunday, but Forest Park and North Central are. Book clubs and movie clubs. We have three book clubs and a classic movie club. So if you're at all interested in any of those, the Nonfiction Book Club meets on the first Thursday at 3:00 PM. The Romance Book Club meets on the second Saturday at 11:00 AM. The Mystery Book Club meets on the third Monday at 6:30. And the Classic Movie Club meets on the third Saturday at 11:00 AM. New members are always welcome, and we would love to help you. We have the books or movies we'll be discussing available at the library, so stop in and see what's up. I also wanted to show off something that maybe you all don't know about. This is something called a Vox Wonder Book. And I don't know if you guys remember book and cassette tape sets or book and CD where you can read along with the book, and it will, you know, either go beep or whatever to turn the page. This is all electronic. You can just turn it on on the side here. You can charge it with a USB C, but you just turn it on, and it will play for you. Normally it will play. I did check this earlier. It does have even that sound, so if you remember those fondly, and you don't have a CD player anymore because the world has moved on, these are wonderful resources that you can have. And if there's a title you're looking for, we can certainly see about ordering any of these in, just like we would any other materials. But these are great with kids to kind of get them more comfortable with both the words and the sounds all at the same time. So it's kind of like an audiobook for kids. And then we do have a few programs coming up. Storytimes for families are always on Mondays at 10:30 AM. We are starting a new program series, Tabletop Gaming for Teens. So all of the different card games and other board games and stuff that people are interested in, come and gather, and we'll see what is of interest for folk, and we'll be doing that monthly on the first Saturday. And that will be on Saturday, September 7, at 3:00 PM. We're also going to be having gratitude journals for adults on Tuesday, September 10, at 10:30 AM. Our downtown library is going to come out and lead that program and show off some of our database resources and everything with that. Registration is required, so you will want to go online and sign up for that, so that we have enough materials for everyone and no one's disappointed. We're going to celebrate National Coloring Day on Saturday, September 14, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. All ages are welcome to come in, and we'll have a wide range of different coloring pages, ways to color it, all kinds of different aspects, so you can make your perfect work of art. And then the teens can also create yarn art on Wednesday, September 25, at 4:00 PM, and that does not have any registration. But the last one is that we will be closed for the holiday on Monday, September 2. All of the library's ones are, but our electronic resources are open 24/7. No waiting. Thank you.
All right.
Jennifer, I wanted to thank you because the gentleman that I sent to you for help, he said that all the problems were solved.
Oh, fantastic.
He said it was fantastic.
Well, I'm so glad that we got him the resources that he needed even.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. It's a 41-location system.
I was going to say, I also wanted to plug, on the Libby app, they also have some read-along books as well. I know when my daughter was younger, the Mo-Williams, Edwina, the dinosaur and stuff like that, they had the words and the readings, so those were.
Was that our Tumble Books one? We have several different ones.
There are several different, yes, and they were fun. Of course, Mo-Williams is one of those that.
Don't let the pigeon drive the bus.
National treasure.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on, reports of municipal officials. Ms. Moore, you can go.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a few things I want to mention. You've probably seen, hopefully, the new signage that's by the, shall we call it, the Andover Curve?
Yes.
So it's quite bright, shows up really well. We can see it literally from the driveway here. You can see it flashing. And we have gotten at least one call, maybe two, of citizens thanking us for putting that up, so that's good to know. Hopefully, it'll do some good. We had a really good park talk last week, so thank you to those of you who came. We had a good crowd, a lot of different people, and it was just a great discussion. So we have one more on September 19. And we're still waiting on finding out about the Community Development Block Grant Award. I got an email from the lady I work with down there that's supposed to be this week, so hopefully, hopefully we'll find out soon. And Resident's Day at the pool. It was slow, it was not a really good day, but, you know, there were people, there were some residents. One of the things when we first advertised it, we started receiving calls from residents who wanted to bring like crowds of kids with them. So just thinking for the future, maybe if we want to do this again, we could pick a couple of different days and have a certain number of vouchers, maybe that people would have to come up here and prove their residency, and then we could give them vouchers. If we do it a few times, then it's not like everybody would, because if they all showed up, we could not handle the capacity, and I didn't want that to happen on really hot days. We've been having a good-sized groups down there. So last thing you'd want is for them to come on Resident's Day and say, well, sorry, you can't get in. But that way, we could control it a little bit, so everybody's not showing up on the same day. So just a suggestion for doing it again, because those two went, I guess enjoyed it very much. That's all I have right now.
Comments or questions?
I have a question. Some of the neighbors asked me since they saw the new signage blinking and so forth, if we could be possibly considering, since it's solar and so forth, for the stop signs to make it a little bit more visible. And some of them had made some suggestions for that effect. Some of them to have perhaps also put the speed limit to flash like that in some of the areas of heavy traffic, because it seems like sometimes we have cars that they're accelerating the stop sign instead of decreasing the speed.
You know, it's certainly an option. I think we would really have to do it count, because Chief and I have had discussions. We have a lot of stop signs. It's the same situation through town, so I think we'd have to do it for any of those we felt were in similar situations. That could prove to be quite costly. I mean, that's like $8,000 to $10,000 for the solar.
What was the cost for that?
About $1,500.
Well, the whole contraption that we did down here, I think, was $8,000. But that's several different things. Lights flashing, the radar going, the speed limit.
The speed limit and the announcer, yeah, because they put one.
And the arrow, that is the flashing.
They put one on Wyndham Road further down towards the cemetery before you go and turn, oh gosh, what is it called, the Memorial Cemetery there on the.
Spring Grove.
Spring Grove. They put one that actually said.
Slow down.
Slow down. Have you been there? Okay.
No. It was the person next to me.
That you were passing.
Okay. And then also, another question that they had was, has any more talk or thoughts about, they also put in there on that same stretch, the Hump there, and they have huge letters before you approach that that says Hump. And then they are advertised, and people know that's happening. So if you go on top of that or whatever speed you're going, it's not because you didn't know.
But didn't we talk about that, and that could, for like emergency vehicles and everything, it could cause damage?
Why Cincinnati is doing that?
All Cincinnati, all border counties going out.
And I've gone past that, the new one on Wyndham, and hardly seen anybody slow down that over.
No.
And my car goes over just fine at 45 miles an hour, so.
Or 35, because I think it might have changed the speed limit, because my map is saying 45, and the sign says 35.
35, they changed the speed there.
And the same way with the sign telling you to slow down. I don't know if I want to criminalize myself, but I don't think I'm going by the sign that hasn't said slow down.
I think like at first, it probably gets people's attention, but then afterwards, it's like, okay, they're not taking a picture, I'm not going to get really incarcerating or taking.
And they have some of Clifton, I think it is, that the bumps or the road are worse than the Hump. So it's easy to go over at the bumps.
Just the potholes.
So potholes are worse than the speed. That might slip folks. Seriously, you know, there are many, many other stops in town that get run as much or more, so we could do a rough count of what that would, we thought that would be, but.
But just to put the light on the stop sign, how much would that cost? Not necessarily with everything else.
I'd probably have to look up the individual pieces of it, which we can do, because it was compiled.
Because they have put it all in College Hill, and they put it all on some of the health aid.
About $1,500.
Yeah.
Okay. Law Director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to report that we continue to enjoy lawsuit-free time. So no, yeah, no legal issues for the village at this point. And really, in fact, I just, right before the meeting, double-checked the last Ohio Municipal League Legislative Bulletin, and really, I mean, there's nothing happening in Columbus right now.
Everybody's running for reelection.
Well, right, there's, I guess we'll wait and see what happens after November. But right now, nothing, no bills or anything of municipal concern that we haven't already talked about. So I can answer any questions, but that's my report.
Clerk of Council, Teresa Lawley.
Nothing.
Okay. All right. Chief Police, Jeff Howard.
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank everybody who came out with Cooking with Cops. I think it was a great evening. Thanks for the Grill Masters, too. I appreciate it.
I was just back if I wasn't on the grill.
It was hot out, and that made it even hotter. But it was my first, but from what I hear, it was probably the largest that we've had, so I appreciate everybody came out.
Yes, it was.
Air care was a big hit, too, so we appreciate that they came out.
And we appreciate all the people calling in, wondering what was going on.
As you know, schools started back in session. It's going pretty good down at the South Campus as far as traffic patterns and stuff. The officers off-duty detail through the end of this week, but actually said everything's been running pretty smooth, so that's a good thing. Our next event, if you didn't make Cooking with Cops, that will have our police cruiser out, the bear captain, SWAT team and stuff, will be at Harvest Fest on the 26th of October. Not too soon to be thinking about that. We'll actually have our equipment and gear there from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM there at Harvest Fest, so good time to get it on the calendar. We'd love to see everybody there. That'll be a good time. Also, this past month, Officer Lenhoff celebrated his eighth year with the village as a police officer, so we appreciate his service. And Stephanie Moan, who a lot of you might not know, Stephanie runs our property room, all of our evidence and so forth, she just turned three. That don't sound like. She's been here three years now, so we appreciate her service. She's full-time share and bill, but supplements by helping us out, which is a tremendous help. As far as the month of July, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, it was probably the busiest month. Actually, I went back and looked at the last 10 years, and we had 34 criminal offense reports, which blows any month out of the water for the last 10 years. I think 22 might have been the highest. So it was an unusual, very busy month. We had 16 offensive arrests as a result of those reports. Keep in mind, 34 criminal offenses, one incident created five of those right there just through one incident. So we hit 178 incidents. We responded to 26 squad runs. Multiple parking complaints, 10 of them to be exact, suspicious vehicles. We had six domestic trouble runs. We talked about domestic violence last month. We had six domestic trouble runs. Four of them resulted in actual arrests for those domestic violence. We had one rape out of the 34 criminal offense reports. We had one rape report, two assaults, one burglary, eight theft offenses, and then some other criminal activity that make up the 34. When some people do read this newsletter, it's not very often we have a rape that pops up, just to know that was a known suspect. They were, they knew each other, so it wasn't a random thing type thing. And actually, no arrests have been, nor do I foresee any arrests being made from that rape report. We issued 18 traffic citations, 17 traffic warnings. We took three auto accident reports during the month of July, and we helped our neighbors on 13 different instances where we offered mutual aid. So that's all I have, Mayor, unless you have any questions.
Just to clarify, the reason there's no arrest is because the individual decided not to press charges?
For the most part, yeah. It may be lack of evidence, but instead of proceeding forward, the victim.
I just didn't want it to look as if, well, we just let this one go.
Oh, no, absolutely not. Good evidence would have needed a lot more, but the victim actually didn't want us to pursue it anymore. So, yeah, good question, though, because some people might think that. So, yeah, I appreciate it. And then one other thing is a little bit of good news. Monday, September 2, which is a holiday, we start a new officer who will be fulfilling the vacancy of Officer Braun that went to Springfield Township. So Anthony Pope, known as AJ, will be coming onboard starting September 2. And then I anticipate the next, not the work session meeting, but the next meeting next month, we'll actually have a ceremonial swearing-in to meet him. But if you're ever out and about and want to stop, meet him, looking for it. It's been a long time coming. We actually waited for him to graduate for the academy. That's how much we thought of him, so we look forward to bringing AJ onboard.
Was he a referral from someone?
No, not necessarily. He was in actually the Sheriff's Academy, worked out of the Corrections Officer, Corrections Officer, but Sheriff's Office actually sent him to the academy at Scarlet Oaks where they were all sheriff deputies. He saw our posting, actually his father's, a lieutenant for Forest Park, has been there for a long time. He's always wanted to work in Green Hills, small community, don't want a big department like that, so he was all, came to us.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so just so the sheriff knows, I didn't go recruiting out of that. He came to us, and he's excited, and he'll be a real good asset for our department.
Very good.
I do have a quick question. With school starting, I feel like there's obviously a lot of stuff that goes on. At least I see a lot of videos about suspicious vehicles and like kids being abducted and things like that. I tell my own boys, like, stay off your phone, have situational awareness, but do you have any other recommendations for the kids?
No, absolutely. That's not just with kids, but adults. You just see so many times, just walking through the parking lot of a shopping center or wherever it is, Green Hills or anywhere, just oblivious to anything around you, not to mention getting hit by motor vehicles, not paying attention, you know, but no, keep that cell phone down. That's a very good point. And anytime, kids, we welcome to come up here and talk to us about stuff like that. You know, welcome anybody in the public, any residents want to come up and get advice like that, we'd be more than willing to sit down with them and talk to them, but that's very good.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, I have the court receipts for the month of July. Indy Bank balance is $25,960.79. Checks to be issued to the state of Ohio is $666.50. Hamlin County, $25.50. And the Village of Green Hills, $2,741. And that's all I have. All right. Reports of committees, Recreation Cable Television, Rachel Hudson.
Oh, okay. I'm first today. Thank you, Ms. Ray. I don't have a lot today. Chief covered a little bit, and so did the municipal manager. I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that are on the calendar up and coming. So Harvest Fest, October 26, I'm excited about it. Yvonne had some awesome ideas, so I'm excited to see the turnout, how everything goes, especially changing that date. And then also, September 14 is our second and last community yard sale, if anybody wants to participate in that. The last day for the pool is September 2. And same sentiment, I went down, popped down to the pool just for a little bit when we had the Resident Day, and I did see some new faces, but it was also a little cool. So thank you, Yvonne, for your ideals for next time. And I know that cable television, that they are doing awesome things out at Waycross. They actually just, I found out because I'm a part of the Colrain Chamber of Commerce, but they just hosted the chamber the other day and had a lot of people there that were getting to see Waycross for the first time. So I thought that was really neat, and had like some giveaways and everything. So everything is running smoothly there, to my knowledge. And also, this isn't necessarily related to recreation, but I just have to share, I took my grandfather to an Honor Flight, and it was amazing. So if anybody knows anyone that is a veteran, especially from Vietnam or any of the wars, reach out to Honor Flight, and you can go as a guardian, and then they can go, and it's typically free. So there's Honor Flight in Cincinnati, Honor Flight in Dayton, and the way that they just like celebrate those veterans is so awesome. Even as a veteran myself, I didn't realize that the Vietnam War vets weren't welcomed home because of the outcome, and they had like the biggest, I don't want to get emotional, get salt, they had bands for them, they had soldiers for them, they had like the hugest welcoming party I've ever seen anywhere, and it brought those veterans to tears. Like, it was so beautiful. So I highly recommend that, if you don't have anybody. And that's it. Thank you.
Have you thought of how we were going to perhaps be able to do something for the veterans from Green Hills that Mr. Bravant mentioned, that he died on that service there, and he was going to check for perhaps Korea veteran or somebody else from Green Hills as well, but I have not heard any further than that. Do you have any ideas?
I haven't heard anything else either. We played phone tag. He reached out to me, and then I did reach back out to him, so I'm waiting to hear back if he has anything, and we're open to it.
I sent him the name and the contact with the commander from the American Legion, and I also to the commander, I sent his phone number for them perhaps to get together.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was something else, since he's particularly talking about veterans that were graduates from Green Hills High School or something, that if something else is in the reparations or anything like that. You have heard anything?
We did talk about maybe doing something part of the semi-quintcentennial, maybe, but we definitely want to honor them if we can, however we can, so I'll follow up once I hear something.
But I think that someone has to do a research from the graduates of the Green Hills during that year, at the time of Vietnam and so forth. from the graduates of the Green Hills during that year, at the time of Vietnam and so forth, and Korea, see if there's anybody else that needs a name to be brought up, so we don't leave somebody not included.
Yeah, and I think he was talking about connecting with a historic society for that.
Okay.
Well, also, another resource, I'm not sure where Glenn Grundy is these days, but he put together the military display at the community building, pictures of the history, so on and so forth. He probably has a lot, a lot of that information. I just, I, after he retired from school, I kind of lost, lost track with it.
Okay. All right, Community Development Jim Bonner.
Nothing to report today.
Services of Streets Melanie Armis.
Nothing to report, we'll get together for either a meeting in September or October, and we'll let everyone know when that happens.
Governmental Affairs Laws and Rules Maria Walther, Walter?
No, nothing to report right now, I'm waiting for whenever we need to have a meeting. Mr. Lee and I would do Finance and Laws and Rules the same day, and I don't know when that would be.
All right, Financing Audit Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members at your place tonight is, as billed last month, it is the recap of both the months of June and July, and I printed them in different formats, so that you could tell one from the other. So we'll, we'll give our attention to July, since it's, it's the most noteworthy at this point. Income Tax, Real Estate Tax, and General Fund still show good, good increases for the year-to-year. Fund balance at the end of July twenty-twenty-four was two million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and three cents. There's a, in July, a twenty-thousand-dollar transfer for work at Malloy's, and we will be enacting that money later in a resolution. Expenditures are pretty much where, where they're supposed to be this time of year, and there are no further transfers from the General Fund anticipated, so. Oh, and one final thing. If you haven't done so, please, please, by the end of September, watch the fraud reporting and training on the link. We're supposed to have this all, all done by the end of September, and just take this and put it into Deb's folder downstairs.
They send it or on email? She was asking for something else as well, what was that other thing? I don't know.
The extra form that they fill out?
Yeah, there's another form, it's just actually to acknowledge that you took it, I guess the certificate is on that, but, yeah, that you complete. I don't know if you have to, but it was on the video and instructions, so. I can get a copy of it.
I think she was putting one in my mailbox.
Okay, I got one right in my mailbox outside, so.
All right. That's all, thanks. All right. Safety Jeff Howard.
Yes, we didn't have a meeting, we need to set one up coming up here in either September, October, and then we'll come back with you, thank you.
All right, it's an opportunity for, this is time for citizens to comment on legislation listed on the agenda for this session of the council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate that you're a resident of Green Hills, and state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes. New Business, Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four-R Twenty-F, Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four-R Twenty-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Whereas the Twenty-Twenty-Four Annual Appropriations that were adopted on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code Section Fifty-seven-oh-five dot thirty-six A five, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the County Budget Commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, since certain actions are needed in the, in the monies appropriated, so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year twenty-twenty-four, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year twenty-twenty-four. Fund description, banquet hall, account number twenty-nine-ten, original appropriation thirty-eight thousand. The change is an additional twenty thousand dollars, with a new total of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Section two, the following transfers of funds be made from previously appropriated monies, nothing. In section three, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
You've been moved to the second, any comments? Are there none? Start to poll the council.
Ms. Harries?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Bonner?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four-R Twenty-F passes. Next one is Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four-R Twenty-One-SNS, Authorizing Assessments on Certain Properties in Village of Green Hills. Ms. Harries.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four-R Twenty-One-SNS, Resolution Authorizing Assessments on Certain Properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of dead and dangerous trees on private property listed below. And whereas the owners of said property did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove of two such trees, and now pursuant to Green Hills Codified Ordinances, Section Five, five hundred and fifty-three point oh-nine, seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the land and collect it as other taxes. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section one, that the Village Council hereby certifies that the costs of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the property listed and placed as a lien against the property by the Auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follow. Follows, parcel number five-nine-seven-zero-zero-eight-zero-zero-zero-four-zero-zero, address Three Beckford Drive, owner, Robert M. Carter, cost nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents. Section two, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the General Fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section three, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
I second it. I think we moved and seconded it, any comments, questions? And the big trees?
Big trees.
This is a record, I think, for assessment. Big, big tree.
Very dangerous.
One totally dead, and the other one had rot about that big around inside of it. All right, clear call, poll the council.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Harries?
Aye.
Mr. Bonner?
Aye.
Hey, Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four-R Twenty-One-SNS passes. Do you have, council members have any comments they want to make, additional? Okay. Can I get out there in that hot weather? All right, municipal calendar. Anything going on?
Labor Day and the last day of the pool.
And the yard sale is...
September fourteenth. Park Talk, September nineteenth.
All right. Okay, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills. For a non-resident, then state your comments. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded, referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes, speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
Some of us shared.
Oh, okay.
We, I didn't...
Thank you guys for your selfish service.
I wanted to make sure it got all the way around.
Yes, some of them shared.
Okay, all right. Monique Nathan-Holter, Green Hills resident. Thanks again to council members for writing a letter to the Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, and asking that the agency comply with the Twenty-Twenty-One Court Order to specifically address scientific evidence related to the health and environmental impacts of RF wireless radiation, including 5G. I'm glad that the council also addressed its desire to keep Home Rule regarding the installation of cell towers. Tonight, I've provided you with copies of a webpage titled, "More Wired Broadband, Less Dangerous Wireless", it was posted by the National Health Federation. I hope you will consider asking our state and federal lawmakers to take action to support wired broadband instead of wireless. I will now read excerpts from this section called, "Preemption Destroys Local Control of Property", quote, "To respond to consumer complaints of poor internet connectivity, the House Energy and Commerce Committee has passed Bills H R three-five-five-seven and four-one-four-one to preempt local governments from setting back antennas safely far from bedrooms, classrooms, office, offices, parks, and farms. Another bill, House passed H R four-five-one-zero, as well as Senate Commerce Pending S four-two-oh-seven, would make available government spectrum to private industry who would exploit a loophole called Section Six-four-oh-nine, allowing the loading of additional antennas onto already-approved towers with little ability for local governments to oppose. Worse, the administration has placed this same preemption in a rule for net neutrality. The National Health Federation strongly supports H R eight-oh-eight-two, strengthening local government discretion to protect property owners, two-thirds of whom prefer wired connection, and ninety percent of whom don't want ugly, dangerous towers hurting their property values by twenty percent." Now I'll read from the section on the other side, "Broadband That Is Safe, Not Just Effective", quote, "Americans want internet access that is not only reliable, but also safe. Congress should not preempt state-wired solutions, nor should it forgive industries' broken promise to use our phone bill surcharges to wire every home", end quote. Additionally, I appreciate that in twenty-twenty-two, the majority of council members voted in favor of passing a protective small-cell ordinance to try to regulate small-cell installation in the village, since then, other residents and I have asked council members to strengthen our ordinance, so it's as protective as ordinances passed by other Ohio communities, such as Amberly Village, Anderson Township, and Marymont. I am asking again for that tonight, thank you.
All right, turns out when I was here. Katie Dyer.